Of course, we can vote for you.
Exactly.
This meeting is being recorded and we are very appreciative especially of the working conditions right now in the recording room.
Under construction.
Under construction. On to the consent agenda. We have the town manager's warrants and we have the minutes from November 15th, November 27th, and December 11th. And then we have one day special licenses for 51 Walden, Inc., on the 10th of March from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m., 51 Walden Street, Wine and Malt Beverages, and the Concord Youth Theater on the 24th of March from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at 1317 Main Street, wines only, and I suspect this is the Concord Youth Theater, but it's probably a fundraiser for adults.
Yes, it is. I can confirm.
Then we have a gift acceptance. We are very grateful to Deborah and Hillary Clark for $800 to the Council on Aging gift account. Do I hear?
Move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have three things to mention. I see you have copies of the Town Managers' Budget Book. The selection of red is the cover was perhaps unfortunate, but I want to compliment the Finance Director for putting out another document that's full of a lot of information. It's available online, so folks should check it out if they have any questions about town operations, the Police Department, Fire Department, whatever, it's all plugged in there. And that leads to, the next item is the public hearings on the annual town meeting warrant start next Monday night with the Finance Committee's discussion of the town budget and spending plans. The School Committee spending will be discussed the following night, Tuesday, February 27th. And I've been asked to remind everybody that the hearings are at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center this year because the hearing room is under construction. And then lastly, the work that's being done in the hearing room is to create some mezzanine office space above, on the second, two and a half, layer two and a half, floor two and a half, and to create new space for the PEG access equipment. And we do hope to purchase new and improved audio and video equipment once that work is done, which is expected to be in mid-April, I believe.
And I understand that the most recent meeting over at Harvey Wheeler was live-stream, hi-def?
High-definition, yes.
Hope for the future.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So then we're going to move right into the review of some of our draft charges, and we're going to start with the Cultural District Advisory Committee.
So sorry for the late delivery of the two committee charges that you're looking at, and this one, the Cultural District is rather thin, but it's a start at least. And I've drafted it to, the Town of Sandwich has a Cultural District, the Glass Town Cultural District, I think it's called, and they refer to the committee as a steering committee, as opposed to a cultural council. We've talked about calling it a cultural council, and so anyway, that was just a suggested committee title, and then it provides some background here on why the junction was created. It's intended to foster local artisans, artists, and leverage the value of all of the businesses and cultural entities to sort of work together and draw the public in from out of town, as well as in-town, to foster and support those businesses and cultural entities. So I've suggested that there be, as far as membership, that it be seven members, if you can find seven members willing to volunteer, somebody from the visual arts, the performing arts, and then five citizens at large. That's just my thoughts on who might be in there, but the representatives from West Concord may have a different view of it. And then I had a few duties for the steering committee to consider doing or performing. So this was a start. I know it doesn't address Alice's thought that we'd have a single overarching committee. We did hear that the Massachusetts Cultural Council prefers a committee for each district to focus on that district. That doesn't prevent the board from having a joint group, but since there is some initiative coming from West Concord, it made sense to me to take advantage of that initiative and propose a committee for West Concord, but that's entirely the board's call.
Well, I've also had the benefit of some email exchanges with our Chamber of Commerce. Right now, the Chamber does the reporting to the Mass Cultural Council in terms of what the cultural districts are doing, and therefore they're already centralized in terms of the responsibilities. And I requested that they be perhaps a stand-in for this coalescing, making sure that, as I think Alice had pointed out, you know, we have a joint calendar, we have unified presence in town, even though we will, even though in meeting the cultural council's requirements there might be two individual district committees or steering committees, that they would all, they'd all work together and ideally cross-pollinate. But, and the Chamber did indicate that they would be willing to step into that role, since they're, as I said, already doing the reporting. And I also requested that if this is the, shall we say, the pilot steering committee of the two, because we'll have the Concord Center Cultural District Steering Committee as well, that the Chamber help us to generate the same level of interest from Concord Center that we've got in West Concord, so that this isn't sort of one, you know, one angle going off on its own or going out far, far ahead of the other. Right now, we've got a draft that could be used in part, once we finalize something, as a model for the other.
I think we do have to be careful, though. I think it's nice that the Chamber is offering support, but in the end, you know, I don't understand the financial drivers there, you know, if artists are being supported, but at the payments made by the membership of commercial businesses. So I don't know how much we're going to ask the Chamber of Commerce to do, because next thing you know, they're going to be asking for funding, and that's something we should be thinking about, that this committee should be doing the work. And if you're going to count on someone else, you know...
I think I'm, and I think that's a good point. I think my thought was the getting a spark going, since, again, at this point, the Chamber's taking on all of the clerical duties, so to the extent that there is report, that is, the Chamber's in a better place to know where the interest might come in Concord Center to develop their own. But that's a good point.
So should this charge include language that compels the Chamber of Commerce to do that coordinating activities? So otherwise, the council would have to be, this steering committee would be the reporting entity to the state, and if that's not part of their charge, should we make reference that somebody else is doing that? Because that's part of why you set this up, is that you have to do that.
It's like we compel the Chamber to do it, but we should at least...
I think that that's this committee's responsibility, because...
But they're not doing it, is what we're saying. It's being done by the Chamber of Commerce is going to coordinate the submittals to the state, and if they're doing that, then somewhere it should be codified, so that if this director leaves, it's still part of the expectation.
Right, it's a responsibility change. Unless we have a further discussion that changes that another time?
I guess.
I'm just curious, does anybody know the relationship between the steering committee in West Concord, if we establish one in Concord Center, and the cultural council? We already have a Concord Cultural Council. What do they do that we should be thinking about if we establish another?
Is that the group that gives small awards to support artists to do a performing art project or poetry reading or a different thing like? So the art, the cultural council receives, I think, $2,000 a year from the state. We match that with $2,000 locally, and this, the cultural council considers applications for small grants to, again, put on plays, have poetry readings, support a mural or a painting.
And are they, is their directive at least local to the town? I think on that list, they were giving funding away to, like, groups in Carlisle, other communities. Is that, I don't know, I'm just asking the question, is that okay with everyone? I mean, if it's our $2,000?
It's Concord Cultural Council.
Well, I think to start with, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that predates the cultural district formation, so ironically, we've got very similar titles with very separate...
That was why I stayed away from the cultural council, referring to the West Concord Junction Cultural Council, because we do have a different cultural council that makes these awards.
We're very cultural.
We have three committees each doing something along our culture in Concord.
They're not precluded from doing private fundraising, I assume.
No, no.
No.
And the cultural council that makes those awards is authorized by the state. They get their funding from the state in part, and they've been sanctioned by the state, and they have to follow certain rules.
So it seems like there might, we might want to include language that both of these steering committees also coordinate activities for applying for artist grants?
Yeah.
It just seems...
Well, it does talk about to explore funding opportunities, including state and local grants, as well as private funding, item number five, the back.
Oh, the back.
Five.
Sorry.
Number four is, it doesn't end with a will.
Yes, so, was it incomplete thought?
And also just in C, membership, second line down, the word "of" I think is redundant.
Which one? Oh, C, shall be of.
First word in the second line, yep.
I heard what you said, but I, with respect to steering committee, is this important?
The title, no. I just was trying to stay away from that cultural council so that we didn't get confused about that, confused this group with that group.
This is a West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee.
Yeah, yes. So you don't need steering?
So you want to take steering.
I don't think so, only because, what's the difference between a steering committee and a non-steering committee?
Nope.
And if there isn't a distinction, then let's get rid of it.
No objection.
So we should be prepared to act on this, and would you make two of these lines, essentially, coming back to us?
Right.
Yes.
With, if we have two...
One for Concord Center and one for West Concord.
Right, but then should there be an item indicating that our expectation is that these guys talk to each other?
Coordination.
Well, so to establish working relationships with is number four.
Yeah.
So we should finish that sentence with all of these.
Yes.
Right. And maybe under membership, we might have a cross-pollination, just a suggestion.
Be a liaison, keep the B people happy.
Liaison, yeah. Okay.
I think if you're going to go further away, Jane suggests, and I think that that ought to be articulated somewhere. Members all can blah, 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 blah. In addition, the committee would be expected to appoint a liaison to that.
Cool. Sir, anything further on this? Okay, and I think we've got some homework on that, and we can move on to the draft charge for our cable television advisory committee.
Thank you for doing this, by the way, Chris.
Thanks.
Sorry again for delivering this at quarter to seven this evening, but I did do the track changes, so you can see the, this is called Draft Three with the February 16th date on it, and then the changes are in red, which I attempted to be responsive. I thought it was a good suggestion that this committee do some of the work of the old cable advisory committee and look at the complaints about Comcast performance. There aren't that many, and that we have them look into that, but also the comment was made, we should be looking at non-Comcast-related activities. So I've inserted in there something that specifically says "non-Comcast-related media opportunities," so that's item six.
And there was some discussion, there is ongoing discussion about, as we move forward, the financing mechanism for our PEG access services, and therefore the use of our cable television advisory committee may change, and so making sure that there is a, some kind of watching for that, or, you know, it could be in the purpose, it could be, you know, adding a financing mechanism.
Well, it's the Town Managers', I think, help me if I'm wrong, it's a Town Manager's responsibility to negotiate with Comcast.
But yes, I have historically done that with the assistance of an attorney that specializes in telecommunications, but it's the board's contract, so you ultimately would approve that.
We approve it.
I think what Jane is referring to is there is, you know, a sense that this 4.8% revenue from Comcast may go away. I think Fios and RCN are not paying that fee, and Comcast is saying, why are we the only ones paying to support PEG access TV? Maybe we shouldn't at all. It's in their franchise agreement that runs through 2024, so we think it's going to continue, but it may be that in the future, they say, unless other parties pay into it, we're not going to pay the only ones paying.
Well, that's one risk. The other risk is that, you know, cable just becomes a less profitable part of Comcast's operation, and consequently, our funds go down.
Right.
But the contract at this point requires him to pay the 4.8 through 2024, so we've got some time, but it's worth...
Is our contract through 2024, or is there a franchise, overall franchise?
Or the franchise agreement that the board signed with Comcast runs from 2014 to 2024.
And in reference to some of the other conversations that have been going on with, regarding CCTV, I just want to thank both the Town Manager and the Chair of the Board from CCTV. I think there's some really positive discussions going forward, and I think that it would be agreed upon by all that where we sit right now, that a cable television advisory committee, whatever name we actually end up choosing for that, is a good addition period. So right, as of right now, there is no ongoing contract, and we'd want to have this committee overseeing. If something changes between, you know, over time, I think this committee adds to the public access.
And the committee will be holding open meetings and will be...
Yes, all of our committees.
Yeah.
Which is different than the board now, because it's a private...
Correct, yes, right, that's, the point I was trying to make is that I think that's important.
Yeah, in fact...
And that's specified in the charge as the last section.
Any further?
So we discussed that we don't love the title of the committee, because cable television does sound a little dated in, you know, light of the social media and YouTube and other media opportunities, but right now, we don't have a better name, so it might be that the folks that you get to, you appoint to this committee, have some thoughts on that and, you know...
Well, the other obvious title, I'm not sure it's any better, is just the PEG Access Advisory Committee, which is what they sort of do.
Yeah.
And I think that would be, I think that would be a...
That because if you didn't know when you looked at the title, they're really not advising cable television about anything.
No. And PEG access is something that we will hope exists long into the future, so...
Still, the...
Still a term of art. It is.
So my suggestion is that you might make a call for volunteers. I think we did receive one green card already. I don't know if we got any over the weekend, but at least one person's stepped forward to volunteer to serve, and maybe the board asks for people to submit green cards. I'm interested.
There's a hand in the crowd.
Thank you. Is there any overlap between...
Yes, they come up to the microphone. Yep. We're being recorded.
And identifying...
Scott Hopkinson, 67 Indian Spring Road. Is there any overlap between the broadband committee that existed at one time and the cable access committee activities? This is, the reason I ask about this is, obviously, we've been very successful in installing and building a broadband through the Concord Light. There was, in the past, a committee that oversaw that effort before it actually took ground. Subsequently, when there was no committee, was when we actually got it through town meeting. But there is, at this point, no oversight or no committee that tries to keep an eye on what's going on there and coordinating the activity there, and I'm wondering if there's any reason to overlap that with this activity, or even as a separate activity?
The broadband activity sort of reports in through the light plant.
That's correct.
The fact they gave, they ever reported the last light plant meeting, so I think that's a committee to which...
Is there a separate Citizens Committee that exists?
The light plant...
Just the light board.
Are all citizens.
Just the light board.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, because I haven't seen a separate committee.
I think the committee was not broadband that we were thinking about, it was more IT, including...
Technology Committee, that meeting?
Yeah.
Technology, right.
Technology, IT Technology Committee, as opposed to just narrow focus on...
Broadband business is a separate business from the light plant. As a matter of fact, they have to be isolated by law, because you can't let the ratepayers be involved in paying anything to benefit the broadband activity, and I think it's important to keep oversight on that.
It's not separate, though. They don't commingle the funds, but it's definitely an operation of the light plant, which is where it belongs, because they use the fiber that the...
Right, they lease, that was the financial plan that we set up, that the fiber to the home investment that the town made to the tune of about $4 million. The broadband service couldn't use that without paying a rent, so when we set this up at the beginning, we set it up, there was a service fee that would be paid, so the ratepayers weren't being affected by the broadband activity. It's just that kind of oversight that I'm wondering is, if there is anything of that nature going on at this point, and it seems like...
There isn't. It might be something for us to reconsider, not only because it's now a bigger activity and the...
Very much bigger, yes.
There's a lot more IT stuff going on in town. We did consider that, I think it was three years ago.
Well, I think it was one of the recommendations of the Governance Study Committee.
So we could pick it back up again, but even if we did it, my suggestion would be not to commingle it with PEG access.
Sure, that's fine, but I wanted to make sure, or find out, and if it existed, find out about it, because I haven't been able to find out anything about said activity.
Well, if we form the IT committee, I hope that we'll see a green card.
It's already in.
Okay.
It went in two years ago.
All right, right.
You're looking for information about the broadband activity?
Excuse me?
You were looking for information about the broadband activity?
That's correct. There's nothing on our website that talks about any meetings or any activity. The last thing I can find was dated 2009.
So this was a presentation from the last light board meeting about broadband activity?
Yes, okay, that's fine.
Did you see it?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
And I guess what you're saying is if you go into our website and look for broadband, it wouldn't necessarily take you to the light plant and then show you there.
Yes, I'm familiar that the broad...
Right, exactly.
The light plant board periodically has a discussion regarding the broadband activity. What I was curious about is, are you, and it sounds like the answer is you're relying on the light camp plant committee to oversee the broadband activity as a party of volunteers that oversee that activity, rather than a separate broadband committee?
As a, that's how it's currently working, but...
I think it reports to the light plant, so that's the first line of oversight responsibility, but from a citizen's point of view, yeah, I think that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any reason to consider whether the Financial Audit Advisory Committee would have an interest in reviewing as part of its doctrine the broadband services?
Talk about that. It comes up in a broader context, so when we get to committee...
Immediately his own reports. Okay, okay. Thank you. Are there any more comments? Okay. I think we've got some more work here, too, but moving ahead. And I do hope that the listening public also heard our call for green cards. I'm sure we'll be inundated. So now we're going on to the draft policy for motorized vehicles at the Patriot's Day Parade.
Oh, yeah.
John Arena made this request. I think the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee is hoping to have an antique car, rather than a horse-drawn buggy, transport the honored citizen this year, because there have been some problems with the horse making it through the three hours of the parade. We haven't had motorized vehicles in the past for the Patriot's Day Parade in particular, so the polls, rules, and regulations were prepared by John based on having looked at other communities. The police chief has reviewed them, as have I. We think they're adequate for cars, licensed cars that have been inspected and so forth, but if the committee would like to have floats or pull a trailer of some kind, we think those rules need to be augmented, but John Arena is not, and this committee's not looking for that right now, they just want to be sure the board...
Well, that's exactly what it says, I mean...
So it was going to take another couple of iterations, I think, to get it right on pulling any wagons and float...
I think I would just have that whole section to leave.
On the following stipulations.
Yep, that's fine.
I think it affirms that you can do it, as long as you pay attention to these rules.
Right.
Because it's the first sentence, the following stipulations would be in place in the event of a participation of a float. Okay, here I am, rule number one, 10-pound fire extinguisher. So I think if their intent is not to have floats, then they ought to...
Strike that section.
No floats, or just get rid of it.
And otherwise, in doing that, again, the police chief would be comfortable with motorized vehicles that have been inspected, registered, and the drivers properly licensed.
I'm wondering whether we should be more specific in terms of the notice. It just says ample notice, and I'm not sure if that's very clear to people, but what that would be.
Well, there's also a comment that says, participating motorized vehicles may not display political or parade inappropriate bumper stickers. I don't know what that might mean.
Well, currently, if you wish to participate in the parade, just walk in the parade, you're allowed to carry a banner of your group, but you're not allowed to provide any signage that promotes and says anything. You're just a group that's participating in the town, you know, organization, and you're just letting people know this is the group. If you come up with political statements or banners with, like, sayings, et cetera, that's not the intent of your participation.
No, I understand, it's just that...
It's the current policy.
It's not laid out, it's just not very clear, when it just says parade inappropriate bumper stickers.
I think it should be a more affirmative statement.
Yeah, right.
As you just, you just made an affirmative statement.
Yeah, it, yeah.
I think that's better language.
Participating vehicles may display a banner or a sign indicating...
The group.
The group.
The group.
But no other...
That's it.
...in the story.
Right, right.
But the car itself is not an advertisement, is the...
No, it's hang banners on...
That's what I'm saying, the banner says it, but the car doesn't...
Right, it's the, this group from, you know...
Can I quote no on X?
Right.
Yeah, right. Oh, yes.
Three, three extra.
In the affirmative case.
Trying to stick policy.
Yes.
And I think it's important to note, too, this notion, which I don't know when it, I guess it used to be done all the time, is this throwing of candy. I mean, there are many examples of people being injured from that in various other activities, where they're Tour de France, they drive the road, and they throw candy, and people get hit by the vehicle, and so it's like, it's great that they're taking that out.
But I assume they can't throw anything?
No.
Why is candy signaled, singled out here?
Okay, no dog treats either.
And it could just stand a good general peddling.
So, yes. So I think that they're throwing of any items or candy from the vehicles in there twice.
Yep. That's okay. Just want to...
Well, in the bottom, in the bottom is the section that's going to get deleted.
There will be no candy, period.
The stipulation is already stipulated for all uses.
The bottom's going out.
Yeah, that whole, the following...
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
We don't have anything coming up before our next meeting, so we'll approve it next meeting in its final form.
Right.
But, so I think John is looking for some reassurance that he's going to get your approval to have a...
We don't have anything coming up before our next meeting, so we'll approve it next meeting in its final form.
Right.
But, so I think John is looking for some reassurance that he's going to get your approval to have an antique vehicle.
I spoke to him today, and he was all set with the idea of no floats. They're in the process of getting what cars they are, they're thinking of having an antique fire engine or perhaps a military vehicle, not a tank, but like something like that. But like a...
That would be a new...
And he said that, too, he's like, not a tank, but like maybe something that would carry troops or something, a small little jeep perhaps, but he doesn't have a list of that yet, and that's why...
Other citizens in a jeep?
Well, no, 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 something with the troops, with the troops.
But the way this was, hold on a second, I mean, the way this was presented to us last time was, that John was here, was, you know, there's some folks who are getting along in age, and it makes it a little difficult for them to go the whole thing, so it's an accommodation as opposed to deciding that we're going to have an antique fire engine, and we're going to have, I don't know what else, but we're going to have antique cars, nine antique cars in here. I mean, that wasn't the intent that I heard when he was here a couple of weeks ago, it was, folks are getting older, it's a little... I wouldn't like to see the character of the parade change, while all of a sudden, 25, 30. You know, I think we have to leave that to the committee, it's perfectly capable, but that was the intent, I heard.
I agree, yep, I agree.
Is that consistent with your liaison to the committees, of their current thinking?
I think it's not like some deliberate transformation, but it definitely, there are conversations or discussions where there's, you know what, there's new ideas, it's, you know, there were some years that participation number was not very good. I think if that encourages other groups from outside the community to participate, I don't think it's a bad thing, you know, I mean, there's a fine line somewhere, but... I don't know, I think it opens up opportunities to...
We're watching, too.
Yeah, yeah.
I was understanding very confined kind of views, not a fundamental change in the culture.
Yeah, I don't think the, I don't think the participation...
I'd say the last few years have been big turnouts, so...
I think that's because of the sashes.
I don't think we have that problem.
The sashes, well, that's, you know, the carpet brand is very important. Who's going to carry the sash? You're going to watch the sash?
Maybe you really can't go.
All right.
So we'll revise this for formal approval at a future meeting, you know, before April 19th.
John's available to come, it'd be nice.
So their next meeting is the 26th at Harvey Wheeler at 6:30?
Before, yeah, before the FINCOM.
Well, they'll be meeting in a different build, a different room at Harvey Wheeler?
Right.
So maybe we could tell them, you're meeting at 6 o'clock, and you guys stop over at 6:30.
Oh, yeah, that's perfect.
Oh.
Well, you know, it's just, I don't know whether we need to hurry up and get him to come, but...
Right.
But whenever we're going to take this up again, they need it in place relatively soon, so they could tell people.
Right, and I think, you know, it could be convenient for everybody next Monday when you're there, pre-public hearing meeting, they'll be in the building, take an opportunity.
Okay.
I'll talk to John tomorrow morning about it.
Great. Otherwise, our next townhouse select board meeting is on the 13th, so... Hey. So, we are moving on to dedication of parcel. I think I see two people coming to speak with us.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Hurley. I'm a land planner, and I'm working with Minuteman Arc. Gene Goldsberry is the CEO for Minuteman Arc. We're here this evening to ask you to vote to accept three parcels of land. Two of them are on Main Street in West Concord, one's on Forest Ridge Road. They total about one acre of land. They're being dedicated to the town under Section 634 of the zoning bylaw. Under Section 634, you have to have a special permit from the Board of Appeals. That was granted on the 27th of December of last year. Both the Planning Board and the Natural Resources Commission voted unanimously to support issuing of that special permit. More recently, the Natural Resources Commission sent you a letter on the 15th of this month recommending that you approve the request. This dedication will bring the amount of land that's been dedicated to the town at Forest Ridge for conservation purposes to a little over 30 acres. In addition to that, we have 13.8 acres where we have conservation restrictions in perpetuity that allow public access. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Any questions? So are these parcels connected to the other conservation lands, is there...
The parcel that's referred to as FR-1, directly abuts other land that's been given to the town. The other two parcels on Main Street directly abut a parcel of land that has a conservation restriction on it in perpetuity that does allow public access, and that parcel of land backs up to the Azabeth River.
Right, mhm, right. Slowly, we're filling in, building in pieces.
Is this land that's conservation but also recreation?
It's essentially for passive recreation more than it is for, say, ball fields or active recreation. But the Natural Resources Department has been building trails throughout this land, so public access is welcome, and there now are marked trails that run through it, and people walk, jog, and take...
Do you know whether dogs will be allowed to accompany people?
I think I'd have to ask your advice in that regard, but I have seen dogs on the trail.
Well, it's leashed or unleashed.
I wasn't going to get into that, Steve, but...
Dogs are allowed everywhere.
Absolutely, yeah.
He did say he was looking for my advice, is what I understood, though.
This is, this parcel, these parcels are welcome, from my point of view, after what's already been done associated with it, and I know the trail down the Azabeth River is an addition, and hopefully we can get, you know, stabilized so that it takes us to...
Yeah, absolutely. Do we need a motion?
I think we do.
Yeah, I move to accept from Minuteman Arc for conservation, recreation, and wildlife habitat purposes, parcel FR-1 on the plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Concord, Massachusetts, owned by Atlas Forest Realty Trust, dated October 25, 2017, revised January 10, 2018, prepared by Pearlie Engineering LLC. Parcel B on the plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Concord, Massachusetts, owned by Benchmark Realty Trust, dated October 25, 2017, revised December 4, 2017, and further revised January 10, 2018, prepared by Pearlie Engineering LLC. Parcel X on the plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Concord, Massachusetts, owned by Elmer M. Purcell and Marguerite M. Purcell, dated August 17, 1989, revised August 18, 1989, prepared by David W. Pearlie, Civil Engineers.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, the town will use that land well.
Absolutely. All right, so this is public comment time. I see a number of folks in the room. Anybody want to join us at the mic? Okay, we are on the way to a record. And of course, I should never have said that. Committee liaison reports, shall we start with you, since you were eager to offer?
Well, I just wanted to say, well, yes, first, the Financial Audit Advisor Committee met on the 12th, and we continued our discussion of the auditors' report for the light plant. We are developing a report that will be submitted to them following our March meeting. We also heard from the auditors of the regional school district auditing report. And I'm pleased to report that for both of those, there were no material weaknesses found in the auditor's report. Again, I would add, not unusual event. There were a few issues that did come up with respect to the light plant. It didn't really have anything to do with, particularly with the auditing reports that we'll be dealing with, so that was a very productive meeting, and we're scheduled to meet in another couple of weeks. Also met with the Hukargo Trust Committee. Ongoing concerns there about their ability to meet the future needs of Concord citizens, and they've been in touch with the Land Planning Committee to make sure that that gets a particular hearing. Alice and I both went to the light plant meeting on the 14th, a rather comprehensive meeting in which a number of rate issues were discussed, in particular tiered structure, meter charges, and rec surcharges. We also heard, as I mentioned, a presentation from Mark Howe about the status of the telecommunications activity, that seems to be coming along very well. Friday, I met with the Tax Fairness Committee. They, along with Hugh Cargo and the assessors, are concerned about making sure that the new law about tax relief for senior citizens who have been in town a long time with limited incomes is well-known. So they talked about how that would become known very well. The assessor is sending out a town-wide letter to everybody. There will be something in our tax bills when they first come out. I think the Tax Fairness Committee got authorization from the town to send out a postcard that will follow that, and they'll also be preparing some material after they get clearance from the town moderator that can be distributed at town meeting. And I think the assessor's letter going to the entire town is important because in addition to seniors, there are some younger people who might have parents who would be eligible, or neighbors, or friends, so a way to get more people involved in that. And then I would just indicate that next week, there's the MBTA Advisor Board of Directors meeting that's being held downtown that I will be attending on behalf of the town. Our fee went up by, not a huge amount, $14,000, but it's hard to understand why.
Right.
So perhaps, so perhaps we might...
It seems out of keeping with some of the other...
Well, it's very weird, you try to get, I don't mean that they did anything untoward, I just mean if you look at the numbers, it's hard to see, oh, well, it's pretty clear why these rates increased, but, so we'll try to take that up.
The Library Committee is actually meeting tonight, but they, I went to an earlier one, and they are proceeding kind of with their theme of being an educational as well as kind of holding the books, but they also technology and whatever. And they've had speaker come to kind of address that issue. The Historic District Commission met, they had a series of petitioners dealing with issues that they were dealing with, but they also addressed the issue of the awards for different historical that they are putting together. But I think they've had a presentation before us in the last couple of years where instead of architectural and other aspects that they want to recognize. The Board of Assessors did address the issue of the senior tax and how to get information about that. They also were trying to grapple with the issue that some taxpayers get a state rebate as such, and how that will be affected, would affect the senior tax, sort of the numbers that they would be dealing with. And they had a series of people who were coming before them looking for abatements, and in fact, those are always interesting hearings in terms of the different factors that go into their determination. The Disability Commission has met, and we're going over the issues of whether there's funds that might be available for a physical item that would be by the visitor's center for the blind Braille-type map, and working with trails to find out which ones are going to become accessible or not, and also kind of dealing with getting another, we're short one member, so getting another member on the committee. The School Committee met, and they've had, their focus has a lot been on financial issues, and I think that that will kind of continue to play out. There's, I think, sort of a feeling or frustration in terms of what the FINCOM and the restrictions that they kind of feel are being put on them, but I think they're working with the FINCOM, and that will work itself out, I think. And that's about it.
That is, a lot to report.
Well, we haven't had the reporting for a while.
That's right, we did skip over it quickly.
Once it gets 11 o'clock, I think we put that on the back burner.
Yes, exactly. And I'm going to cede my report to Mr. Ing because it was really a, it was, I had the pleasure of attending a 2229 meeting with the EPA, and I think that's, you have far greater knowledge of that than I do.
Yeah, it was a, it was a meeting that the 2229 Main Street Committee scheduled to have select board members, as well as town council, town planner, town manager, and town financial director or treasurer join the meeting to talk or speak with the EPA, who brought their project managers, as well as their council, to talk about the StarMet site and kind of the status and the next steps moving forward, where, you know, last year, town meeting approved an article which, you know, gave us the opportunity, if the time was right, to seek acquiring that property. The EPA gave us an update on the status, and thank you to the 2229 Main Street Committee for kind of being the stewards of that process, you know. Buildings been removed, we have a Record of Decision, which kind of defines the plan for how the rest of the remaining parts of the contamination on the site will be cleaned up, has been in place. EPA Council told us the timing for getting the funding to be officially allocated for that Record of Decision is, you know, with all good things, with some luck, maybe by this fall, September. I believe it's 98% of the cleanup is funded, will be funded by the Department of Defense, 2% from the, I guess, the owners, the current owners, or what they've evolved to be. So those, that documentation's kind of in that process. One of the things we discussed was there's a pilot program out there right now which talks of expediting superfund cleanups, but I think everyone in the meeting agreed that we are so far along, that expediting program, I don't think it'll really help us move it any quicker than we are right now. And one of the things that would help with the EPA in their design, once the funding's approved, they can start to design how the property would be, the cleanup, and how we would engineer, say, the finished product. So we'd ask them to meet their residential standard, which is one of the higher standards or the highest standard that they can comply with, but without a development plan... But without a development plan, say, from the current owner or say if the town decided to be a partner in the process, we could provide a master plan that would show, you know, us this type of use and, you know, this uncontaminated area will build, you know, in the safer areas, you know, just natural passive recreation or some type of structure depending on what our planning group, our planning committee would come up with for possible uses there. So it was all well-received around the room and I think we're finding, we're gonna, we have homework, everyone has some homework. We're working on how to come up, strategize on the planning process and the timing and possible funding. There's an article in town meeting for that. EPA is going to let us know or do research on how, you know, when is it advantageous for the town to kind of take a level of control that would help them in the cleanup process? So we'll, we'll get that timing. Doesn't necessarily need to be now, could be, you know, somewhere along the line so we could provide that institutional control stability. So I thought it was really good.
The control would come without any potential liability?
Right, and that was our primary concern. We definitely talked about the current scope of work, any undiscovered things that could happen down the road, cleanup of groundwater, all those issues, they understood why we're so concerned about that. And there was no indication that we would be taking on any of that liability. We'll all be watching carefully to make sure we're protected as always. But I, I think from their point of view, you know, it's, it's a pretty common concern that, you know, when municipalities kind of help out on that development side, so.
Is another date set for sort of the planning to get together?
We definitely talked about, I, I don't remember what.
I think we talked about, yeah.
Late August, September, so we can hear about that process. If that funding gets signed off, that, that's like a good win for.
So we had talked, we had talked before about trying to think about coming up with a committee of some kind that could be the spearhead for the planning, however it's conceived. Is that something that we should be thinking about doing now?
Yeah, Marcia was with us in the meeting and it's definitely kind of part of our homework is to come up with our timing and a plan for, for what we need to do to pull that committee together. Whether or not funding is needed, there's that article at town meeting which could help facilitate a consultant who could help us participate in that. And EPA was more than supportive with some options as well for the planning side, so.
Right. They, they work with a number of different entities that are well-known experts, experts in, so we could sort of meet, match our own efforts and get guidance from one of their sets of experts.
And also, the other issue was pilot was one, and I heard you say probably there's no real upside or advantage to us doing that now because we're far along.
Right, right.
The other was the notion of there's institutional control and there's ownership.
Right.
Ownership, no, but it's sometime coming up, maybe some kind of institutional.
I mean, right now, they have full control of the site for the cleanup. So there's really no need for us, for the town to be, I guess, owners of that property at this time. It doesn't, you know, our town departments understand what they're doing.
Wasn't it?
Well, I think that what was, struck me, and again, I was, I was coming to this as, as the chair, not as someone who history, the way Steve does, but what I didn't hear was an urgency from EPA to the town to jump in right now, that, that we were acting in good faith as a partner in all of the things we were doing as they'd expect us to, but that, that taking.
Are not jumping and is not slowing the process.
No, there's no, absolutely not.
I think it's more when the cleanup's completed, there's monitoring wells, there's perhaps a groundwater treatment, treatment facility, like a device of some kind on the property. So to have us at that time kind of provide that level of.
But I guess the question is the definition of cleanup completed.
Right, right.
That's the tricky.
Yes. And how do you, how do you ever know it's done?
Exactly.
Yeah, no, I mean, the committee and Steve were to be complimented.
The committee's doing amazing.
And have.
Been there for over twenty years. I mean, it's, and should I just kind of finish up? I, I usually don't mention much on Hanscom Field Advisory Committee, but just a quick update. It is the fifth, it's kind of, this year is the year for the environmental impact report to be updated, so they've been kind of in progress gathering data there. Overall, activity has been very steady as well as noise levels kind of dropping, trending downward over time, just because I think the equipment is, the technology is getting better and the louder jets and so on have been kind of been getting taken out of.
So it's not a traffic decrease?
Right, but the activity's been steady. It hasn't been alarmingly, I mean, a year ago, if you guys remember, there was talk about like GE hangers and so on, and that's, you know, kind of disappeared. And there's some development there. I mean, the fixed base operators for private jets is definitely happening there. A lot of hangers are being re-renovated and worked on, but I think.
Amazon's not going to take it over?
Not that we've heard of, and we ask every, every meeting, it's funny, we always ask, is there a commercial carrier who we've contacted and they always have to answer, you know, and let us know. But, so yeah, the EPIR is always a good thing to see what they offer to the towns and that's been ongoing. Affordable Housing Funding Committee has been working really hard. They've been pulling together their options of study. Nothing's been locked in. They're trying to prepare their ideas for generating revenue for affordable housing to present to, say, the select board in the near future as well as FinCom. I think FinCom's their primary, a big meeting for them. They'd like to really have a good conversation with them. Some options, they're studying is the original proposal at town meeting. Another is one which is a broader fee or revenue generation from all building permits, more, you know, across the board. There's an interesting one, which mechanism that's used at purchasing conservation land or a way of generating revenue from closings, real estate closings in town like Martha's Vineyard or Nantucket, I believe, does that. And that, that amount of money at closing is used, kept in a trust or a bank and can fund various activities. And then also, I know Todd's been working on this bond option which would kind of help kind of fund or give momentum to a type of land trust where, or a housing trust. And you could do your projects off of that. So they're pulling it together, very good conversation about being a townwide support and participation, not picking a group that out of the blue has no, has no ability to fight back if, if they're getting singled out. So I think that's a really good approach to it.
It's sustainable.
Yes, yes. It's kind of town, if we really believe in supporting that mission, it's, it's, it's a, they're, they're finding, trying to find a fair way.
Well, it sounds like the more we apportion this across the board, then if a spike is in one place, you know, you, you're not putting all of your eggs in one.
Exactly.
Income bracket or one funding mechanism. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
I can be fairly brief. Planning Board has met a couple of times. Just, people may be interested in knowing that there's a seventeen million dollar project at the Shottet Country Club that's on the docket. This, I don't think a decision was made on this particular one to be continued, but I was very glad to hear that they are including a lot of sustainability principles in the design and construction of the new property, the new addition. They're adding an addition, they're changing the entry in the roadway that comes in, they're changing where they have their HVAC system, sort of renovations and changing the interior space as well, but they'll be installing low-flow showers, low-flow toilets, LED lighting all through, high-energy panels, new windows, spray foam, solar potentials they're reviewing right now.
Great.
So with a hundred and seventy grid panel option, sounded like a big.
That's a large.
So it's just an interesting conversation because as you go to the planning board, projects that are coming in are now being, their questions that the planning board asks are, you know, are you thinking about sustainable features in your design and architecture?
Sure.
And the answer's coming back, yes.
How about their irrigation system?
Still under discussion.
The which?
The irrigation system, right. Caffeine area, as you probably saw, is still under discussion and they are working on the comprehensive long-range plan and their input into the draft that's been, I think it's now been posted online, the current draft. The historical commission, two big things, the preservation awards are coming up again, so they're starting to accept applications from designers, architects, builders, homeowners who have done projects that would be, that might qualify under the preservation awards. And there's a discussion that will be ongoing for a while regarding the demolition delay What we're finding that the projects are coming to the historical commission where developers are interested in, in demolishing a house and building new. And when the home is on the historic registry or in the historical database, it has to go to the historical commission. Developers are finding they come early, early on in the process so that they start their clock ticking before they have plans, designs, any interest in line yet for what's going to go onto the property so that when they, they have an extra year to develop all those materials before seeing another board or committee. And so they will have come out from underneath the delay, which, you know, for the historical commission, you know, it sort of wasn't the intent, it was to actually try to find a buyer or someone who would take a historical property, incorporate it into the site design, be able to move it somewhere, find a particular buyer. And that's unfortunately not what's happening.
Alice, can I come before the commission, before they've taken ownership?
So, that's a good question. The project that recently came through was in a position where they hadn't taken ownership yet.
Do they have any standard?
So, and so they were told that this one, they couldn't have a position yet because they don't have a project to look at. But we, the historical commission can't review a demolition project based on what its replacement is. It looks at the demolition of a historic property in and of itself. So they don't need to present anything for what's going in there, but they do have to have ownership.
I guess the current owner could file it for you.
The current, so the bylaw, I have to look at the language. I believe the bylaw says the current owner must retain ownership for a period of time so they can't, must do it with the intent of selling a cleared piece of land. So this, this is an ongoing conversation as we start looking at how is this bylaw working and is it meeting the intent? If I had, I went to the Minuteman Book Tech meeting, progress is great. So I'll show another video or another slide presentation some other night. A lot of the steel is in, all the concrete's done, steel is up, there's first floor roofing, you know, steel plates all in. It's seventeen percent done.
On budget, on time.
On budget, on time. Little glitch with permits still from Lincoln, still negotiating on the building permits. They are asking for permitting fees just under a million dollars from the school project and have been granted a sixty thousand dollar abatement to those fees so far. So working to see if we can change that in some way or influence a smaller amount in fees, I believe, seems warranted. The project did receive state funding for PBRA in the parking. They received one point two million dollars, so.
So we're talking about canopies?
Canopies.
Excellent.
And they got state funding for one point two million.
And will that be going, will they own it or will they lease it?
I don't know if it got that far.
Okay.
It'll be a large canopy. CSAC is working hard. I think we talked about it at our last meeting, the HeatSmart program is about to be launched so that anyone interested in either exchanging their current heating system or installing a cooling system, the HeatSmart program has, working with a CMLP, providing incentives for heat pumps.
I think you got to push it in the summertime.
For cooling, before the cooling.
Yeah.
This program has a short window for the state funding, so.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, when it's seventy.
Trustees of town donations, we do need a new member for the trustees, so we should think about.
How many?
We have a lot of green card. We should look at all the green card needs and figure out what appointments we'll have to make after the, after town meeting once some appointments retire. So I think that might be it for me.
Did they have their January thirty-first meeting? Is that what, when, when, when did you go to the trustees of town donations?
Last week or two.
To what?
No, it was just recently.
Last week?
Hmm, I don't think it was last week. I have to look at my calendar. Are you looking for something specific?
Well, Hugh Cargill asked when I was at their meeting when the next meeting was. I thought I went on to the town calendar and saw a tentative meeting for the thirty-first, but I didn't see any other posting until May.
Trustees of town, town donations met on January thirtieth.
So that's, the next one isn't until May.
And at that meeting, they're going to review their policies, their investment policies and strategies for being able to retain the capital of their current trust and also provide the needed cash for like the Hugh Cargill Trust. They are still bothered by how those decisions were made and they're working to resolve it.
Okay. So now we're on to miscellaneous correspondence and I did want to bring up a couple of items. First and foremost, I circulated an email earlier talking about a response to our friends at Concord Unleashed who continue to be concerned about the select board taking a position with regards to the NRC's decision. And my suggestion is that I respond, you know, in keeping with our position that, and our, our understanding from town council that we're quite clear in the NRC's jurisdiction and our lack of it. So while I appreciate, and I think we all appreciate, the many voices in town, the select board, you know, we, we can, actually, the town manager appoints members and we receive recommendations, but we do not rule over voted decisions. And I don't think actually we have heard any more of the recommendations and I don't think we're scheduled to hear them for a while, so. With, is there any more input from the board?
That's just not true of just the natural resource.
No, it's also.
It's also historic district.
Exactly. These are, right.
So.
You're right, it is true, but there are statutes. The NRC has statutory responsibility. Some committees don't have statutory responsibility, not that we could overrule them, maybe we could, I don't actually know, but some committees do their work by state statute and that's where we, that's their job.
So they're still writing with the same interest that they're waiting for the select board to take a position.
Right.
On this and do we need to authorize the chair to write a letter that reiterates the position that this, not the, this select board's responsibility or has the authority to overrule a decision with the NRC at this point? It may, would it be useful for us to do that if it's, I know it was discussed in our hearings and our meetings and I'm just wondering if putting it in as a letter would be helpful to whoever's writing and.
I think it would, it would just reaffirm our public statements. I looked to my fellow select board members.
And that was communicated by an email or by a letter? So I would think.
It was an email to, to the entire board and to the. It was an email to, to the entire board and to the town manager.
So I would think you could reply likewise.
Right. So if I have the move to authorize me to sign such a letter, I am happy to.
I thought, I, I thought I had seen a response to you, by you, to the person who wrote, where you indicated exactly what you've just said.
I proposed a, for us to discuss here, a, exactly that, a response. So if I hear a.
So I would move that we authorize the chair to finalize and submit that, that response to the emails received, identifying the role of the board.
Is, no, I was gonna discuss if, so, I, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know, maybe it's just the day I've had today, but is just a note that says, well, that's not my job, is that enough? I mean, shouldn't we as the select board, and the way this government in our community is set up, is that these, these committees are appointed individuals? I am not going to micromanage someone on a committee. You don't volunteer to be told by someone else who's an elected official, well, that's not the way you should do it. I mean, I don't care what the finding was, whatever they said, I would still support them. Because, you know, the, the NRC is, has to make some pretty tough decisions along the way, and I don't think the individuals on that committee are best served by just maybe a letter that just says, well, it's up to them, they're on their own. I mean, I think, I think we should strengthen the message and say the process is not that when you hear something you don't like, that you.
It's appealed to the select board.
You ask someone to override. And, and that's the case, you know, I know zoning board of appeals or the planning board, some tough decisions have been made, you know, in, in my history, and I think that's, it should be more commended than.
I think if it's a lack of understanding of the roles, I think explaining the role is all that's necessary. I don't think we necessarily have to take a position one way or the other in terms of what the decision.
Oh, I'm not even talking about the decision, but I think we should reinforce the process and, and the way, you know, there's no, there's no short-circuiting.
But we haven't overseen the process, so I'm not sure why we would enter into that area where I think that that might have, that puts the select board in a position that I think is unnecessary. I'm not sure if we, since we haven't monitored it, it's not under our jurisdiction or control, why we then say, okay, now we're going to go ahead and support what took place. We don't, you know, that's not really our, our role. Our role, it seems to me, to say just what Jane was going to say, which is that, you know, we don't have, you've come to us, we're not the ones you should be coming to.
No, no, that, that's for sure, but I, I think, I don't think we, we should give a little more guidance or try to enlighten folks about the process. I mean, they're just trying to find the quickest way to get there, to change the decision. So.
So what I hear you saying is perhaps a stronger positive statement, which is that the select board, with, with unknown exceptions, stands by its committee's decisions. That's what the role of those committees are. And in this case, there's a state statute that makes it very clear that we have no role in, in return, in overturning a decision, but that we appreciate the authority that a committee has, period. Is that more along the lines of?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I'm looking for something.
Me too.
A little more backup there. Those folks.
It seems to me, I mean, we have no statutory responsibility or authority to overturn the decision.
Right.
That's quite clear, so one thing we could clearly state.
Uh huh.
But the point that Steve is making, I think is also very important, that is, and I'm, this is not about yet right now.
Right.
But if a committee in town with statutory responsibilities conducted itself in a manner that we thought was inappropriate, I think it would be our obligation to say so. We can't maybe make them change their minds, but we could certainly point out that we don't think this was a process that we could support. So I think there is something, even for committees of statutory responsibility, as elected officials of town, I think we have that responsibility. So, I've heard you reporting any number of times about the process, we heard them reporting any number of times about the process. I think the process was comprehensive and wholesome, and if, and that's my view. If that's the view of the select board, then I think we should say so, and then we should be supporting the committee's decision. We don't need to like it, there's lots of decisions that get made that we don't like, but if we're convinced that the process was wholesome, that it afforded opportunity for point, you know, doing all the things we would want, and the committee went about its business and worked in like manner, then I think we should say so. We should therefore support their decision, making it clear, even if we didn't support it, we just, you know, we can't overturn it. So I know we might not agree with the decision.
Right.
There's been decisions that zoning board of appeals, personally, I didn't like, but too bad for me. That's the way it goes. I mean, they did their job, that's, that's what they're there to do. So, I'm with Steve, I think if we're going to do it, it shouldn't be just, we don't have any authority to do this. We have liaisons to all the committees in town, they're responsible for just overseeing those exact sets of activities and reporting back to us what they've seen and we've heard from the committee, so. And that's, since I think it was a straightforward process, you know, people didn't like it.
I think that it was more than a disagreement with the result that was of concern. I think there was a concern about the process.
That's right, there was.
And for that reason, I wouldn't be able to support what you're recommending here.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be true. I mean, that, I think is exactly the, the point. But I think as a committee, if, if we looked at the process and there's hardly a process that goes by that doesn't have some faults with it, I've, we've all seen enough of those.
Our own included.
Well, no, we're not.
No.
But, but, you know, but it has to be something rather substantial as opposed to hiccups along the way. And I didn't hear the chair reporting anything like that, and I didn't hear anything like that when the NRC came to, to report to us when we had the hearing a few weeks ago. So, I don't, I, you know, I know we've heard people who have said that they didn't like the process.
And, and not just a few.
Yeah, not just a few.
No, I say not just a few.
I said, not just a few.
I mean, I think we've got a folder full of.
And I suspect that, that we will have a chance to hear from, you know, quite a few. I mean, I, this, this conversation is, you know, if the public wants to continue this, there'll be plenty of opportunity. I don't think that's the point here. I think the point is simply to ask the boards, you know, I'm asking, you know.
But I thought what we were doing was responding to the request of the email, which was for the board to take certain actions. And I thought that your recommendation was to say, we are not going to do that because we don't have jurisdiction to do it and it'd be improper to do it. But I don't think we have to jump into the debate about whether the process itself was a shining example of democracy.
I never said it was a shining example of democracy. That's, that's not what I said. And I think the email for, the email that I saw, and I think I responded to you, that I didn't understand the author of that email to ask us to overturn anything. I was looking, but I can't find it, of course. But I thought he was asking us to recommend that, and I'm sorry if I get this wrong, recommend that the NRC look at this again, review this again. I, you have a.
Yeah, I, I think the request was that we issue a strong public rebuke.
Yeah.
And, and.
Go on further down.
Right, and then.
We don't need to do that, but further on.
And that, let's see, ba, 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 ba. And that they return to the drawing board, re-engaging on data. And.
I think they basically said that they were not, they felt that they weren't heard.
Right.
You know, it's a difficult qualitative discussion about whether somebody has heard or didn't believe or the findings or had different conclusions from findings. The process, I think, was honest. It was open, participatory. There was a lot of testimony from a lot of different sides. Studies were read, there were various viewpoints that were not always in agreement, and we find that in a lot of our committees.
Yeah.
And so an aggrieved party may feel this way, but I can't say the system or the process was to be faulted because it was, everything was done on totally open process.
That's, that's one too. That's been reported to us by the chair, that's what we heard here. And I didn't read his email as asking you to rebuke, yes, but to overturn, I didn't. That wasn't even in the email, as there is, I can recall. I'm not willing to rebuke what they did. I certainly support the process as I heard it. And, you know, it's also very, the language in the email that we received is very similar, at least in my part of the brain, it was very similar to the warrant article.
Mm-hmm.
Which essentially said, back to the drawing board, so, you know, that's why we have warrant articles.
And I think that we will have this discussion again, as I said, in the public hearing process.
That's a chance for, that's a chance for the select board to be quite different in the way it approaches that. That's a question of, do you want to ask the NRC to go have a mor, I think the word moratorium, I can't remember exactly, moratorium, and go back and collect data? That's something, independent of their process and independent of their decision, that we can debate and decide whether to take a position on as a select board. But that's quite different than.
And challenging the process.
Supporting a process and a decision made by a committee that operated as near as I can tell, anyway, in accordance with all the rules they're supposed to operate under. I would hate for us to get in a position of second-guessing process for committees in town. It's hard enough getting folks to serve on some committees if every time you turn around, somebody's second-guessing what you're going to do. I think it'd be very hard to continue to get the kind of cooperation we do from our citizens.
So where does that leave us? Do we think it's not necessary of it?
Well, yeah, I, I think if the, the guidance that I've heard, it may be that there's really no response immediately necessary, period. Because there isn't, there isn't a jurisdiction for our response. I mean, you know, there's no, we, I don't think that we're, we're not interested in issuing a review, which is the only request made, and.
Last part of it asks them to go back to the drawing board, so we're not.
And we're not.
And did they do that either?
No.
So my suggestion, because I don't, I think this is not one we can wrestle to the ground in a sort of meeting without having some.
Not to invite a draft.
Yeah.
Is to authorize the chair to draft a response along those lines for us to look at at our next meeting on the 26th or something.
Okay.
So I move that the chair be authorized to draft a response to the citizen who wrote us with respect to the decision and the process of the NRC. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The other piece of miscellaneous correspondence I just wanted to note was a, an email from Jonathan Kies regarding our public shade tree audit and his, I think, very, his concerns, which really I, I was able to spend a little time with him, regarding the enormity of the job going forward to steward those public shade trees now that they're identified. And he initially flagged concern over putting yet another responsibility on Rich Rayne's mantle. Now, I've heard from the, the town manager, I mean, his concerns that Rich's background might not be appropriate for a tree warden. And I think that I, I've seen from Chris that, you know, he's got.
He's an arborist.
He's an arborist. He's got direct.
Degree from the Stockbridge School.
Right, exactly. As do, there's some others that share this duty with him, all of whom have appropriate education. The thing I thought was worth mentioning here was the fact that he did bring up, the fact that this is not a one-year, five-year responsibility, this is something that should probably go into the long-range planning because it is a 30-year, 40-year stewardship effort. That now that we have the inventory, making sure that not just one public works director or one set of, you know, or a tree warden has it under their jurisdiction, but that there's a, a forward-looking plan for it. And I thought that was certainly welcome. And I, I always appreciate it when somebody of Mr. Kies' vantage point.
Well, I think the point is it's a big job.
It's a very, very big job.
And also on top of that, you've got the new tree.
Inventory and software.
No, the demolition, what's it called?
Oh, the tree, tree bylaw, tree preservation.
So that's going to require somebody to be looking at that stuff and making sure that folks are in compliance with that. So there's two new big things that have come on, duties of a tree warden, I guess.
Yep.
Now, this is not obviously a year that we're going to be increasing budgets, so.
I also remember that the mothers up front for them that they had about gas leaks and the damage that gas leaks have for the trees.
For the trees, and that was brought up again.
That's something that I think we really do need to kind of be focused on.
And that was, that was brought up at their, their annual meeting, which I attended a week or so ago as one of the areas, so. That's all I have. Is there anything else anybody has on the miscellaneous end?
I move to appoint Paul Ware of Four Black Birch Lane to the Historic Districts Commission as an associate member for an unexpired term to expire January 1st, 2020, as well as Ray Andrews of 11 Dalton Road to the Affordable Housing Funding Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good rail, be a real good addition to that committee.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good. He's, he's been enjoying it.
Do I hear a move?
Move, Sujan.
I didn't know Paul.
Second.
All in favor?
I didn't know that either.
Yes. And you know what, I, Steve, I'm noticing that under.